Now they're Michaels down.
It's a work day, boss.
I know. Let me call the special council meeting to order at 3:30 here on the 2nd of December. Final month of the year. I'd like to acknowledge that the press and public have been notified. Okay, a few items on our agenda. The whole business, we're going to discuss the beach access parking management again. The most telling thing that we can speak to is the fact that we have written our letter to the Secretary of Transportation, which I believe everybody here has gotten copies of. We met with the local administration for the Department of Transportation and received a very favorable nod. It's about as close to an affirmative as we're going to get until the secretary takes it under consideration at the staff level, et cetera. You've seen the letter that we sent. I'm assuming you've all seen it. You're getting blank stares. So, we covered a lot of things with the administration, not only Concept B and detail and the parking implications of what that means. We talked about golf cart parking and where that frankly was a surprise to me, but he was very amenable to allowing us to designate specific spaces in the public right-of-way for golf cart-only parking. So, that should be hopefully affirmed when we get it back from the secretary. We also, on the avenues 43rd to 54th, I guess it is.
Third.
Yeah, 53rd, I guess, too. Talked about the limitations on parking there and in particular, the desire from the work that the planning commission had done previously of creating some parking spaces at the end of the road and making those the only spaces available for parking. We showed them the sketch that Douglas had given us, I guess, the last time we met. I think we gave it to him, did we not?
We did.
And he left with that as part of his package of information that we provided to him. So, I'm hopeful that comes back in the affirmative also, but he was bullish on, I would say, releasing us to do the parking things that we have outlined on both the paid-for parking areas, on the resident-only areas, and then the rest of the island, of course, would be unregulated and stays the way it is. What did I leave out?
I think you covered it all. Robert Clark indicated to us that he was going to make the Secretary of Transportation staff aware that day that this information was going to be coming to them. So, you know, trying to sort of pave the way for, you know, bumping it up in the priority. And I know that you all saw that the communication basically said that anything that they could do to facilitate releasing us to move forward would be very, very helpful. And we left our discussion regarding those avenues, you know, fairly loose. We indicated to them that what's marked on the map, and I'll just remind you all of this, that what's marked on the maps as they were submitted were the spaces that were available under the old beach management plan, which has not been updated. So, you know, we know that there are not that many spaces on those avenues now. And in fact, we've put in two mechanisms in tandem with SEDOT since that beach management plan was done. And one is the no parking on pavement, which limits the number of spaces that are in those areas. And the other is the signs have been installed, "No parking from here to corner," and it doesn't say that, but it's got no parking and arrows. So, those two things happening limited the parking in that area. And then there have been, there's been some new construction in the area, additional driveways, things of that nature. So, just doing a recon today, going down there and riding down each of the avenues, even if you didn't put the parking at the ends of those avenues because it were not feasible or whatever the case might be, there's still likely on each of those streets only one or two parking spaces. And that's a non-engineering, I would say. That's not Linda going out and measuring, but simply going and looking at each one. And I will tell you, if you all are going to conduct the same recon and go, "Look, my advice would be to either be on foot or on a bicycle or in a golf cart," because it's very difficult to maneuver a vehicle and turn around down there without encroaching into someone's driveway in order to do it. So, another reason why those areas are really not as acceptable for parking as they perhaps were when the beach management plan was done. There were also a few inconsistencies if you read through everything that was submitted to the Secretary of Transportation, but the goal was not so much to say this is the exact plan. It was more to say, does a concept like this pass, you know, sort of SEDOT's test of something that they would have no reason to challenge us on? So, you know, like little things were in there, like some of the material said through Labor Day and then some of the other material said through the end of August, just little things. But I think the idea was for them to approve the concept and then we would refine going forward to include the possibility of if other areas of the island have legitimate reasons for wanting to petition in the future or council has a legitimate safety reason, pollution congestion concern, to want to change some of the other areas in the future. The one area where we kind of need a little bit of input and guidance on that we didn't really chat about a lot, let's see, okay, breach inlet to the, I want to get myself oriented, is right here, this regulated parking section is the question of how far does that extend into this area over here? You have to kind of line these up a little bit better. It's just looking a little nebulous as to how far this should go, and it was not marked on the handouts in there either. These are the large-sized version of what we have. And so, before we get to a stage where we finalize everything, we need to know from the policy-setting bodies how far northeast we go with this. Do we go to just the same distance back? I think this was the 1,000 feet. Do we go the same distance back, 1,000 feet, and only go to here or, and then come down to Palm and just regulate it along Palm? Or just what?
Why wouldn't we be consistent?
And we certainly can be. It just right now is not.
500 to 1,000 feet be resident, regulated resident only, and then more than 1,000 be unregulated.
I mean, that would be my thought, unless somebody has a reason why we ought to do something different, always be consistent at least.
Is the topography that different if you go down?
There's not a line, there's not a road that cuts at the 1,000.
There's no parallel road.
Yeah, it will seem a little odd just in that when you get into private property.
Yeah, this is Wild Dunes.
So, when we say it'll be 1,000 feet, it'll only really extend from 500 feet to 700.
You can't regulate the private property.
Can I ask a question? I think 43rd, 44th, I think one or two houses in is Isle Palms and then beyond that for a couple houses is Wild Dunes. Am I correct in saying that?
They are, Mayor Croenick probably would be better. They are in the Wild Dunes zoning, they're in the PDD zoning, but they're outside of the resort for every other kind of technical reason.
So, the roads and the rights-of-way.
Just like 53rd and 57th.
The roads and the rights-of-way are still in the state system. They're not in the, they're not private roads.
Okay.
So, that's what we're dealing with here is the parking and the rights-of-ways.
Just trying to clarify that.
Yeah, you're right.
Can I have a point of clarification? When we're asking DOT, SEDOT, excuse me, are we going to assume the authority to regulate this area?
We have the authority to regulate parking now. What we're asking for is whether or not the method in which we would like to regulate it is acceptable to them. Like, we know metered parking's acceptable and things of that nature, but this is, this is a little different in that it's permitted parking based on, similar to what the city of Charleston does in their very congested residential district and also the city of Columbia in their very congested residential district. So, there's precedent out there for this type of thing. The difference is we're talking about a beach situation as opposed to a downtown residential area.
So, having the authority, but subject to, it's always subject to their approval. So, you know, we may have authority, but, you know, it's all subject to their approval. We're seeking their approval. Barbara?
Yeah, something that's probably not important now, but I know when we were talking about it before, we basically had this little yellow line running down the middle of Hartnett. Right? I think it has to run down the back of that lot, so all of Hartnett.
Yeah, we're not going to have.
Not one half.
We're not going to have one side of one street.
One other little point, it's kind of funny. You said that when you went down to the side streets on the north end of the island, you gotta walk or ride a bicycle or a golf cart because it's very difficult. And you can only imagine what it's like to have an EMS truck or a fire truck or sanitation truck.
I think the point.
You're backing out now.
Right.
Wait a minute, back to this Hartnett thing, what did you just say?
Well, right now, this yellow line goes right down the middle of the street.
The squiggly line goes right down the middle of Hartnett.
Right.
What are you saying, it ought to be on?
On the backside of the, all of Hartnett should be included, not one side of the street and the other side.
How about the people that live right behind them?
But that's the next street.
No, it's like, the very next lot.
They live on a side.
But they live on a side street.
Basically, if you live on one side of Hartnett and the people behind you will be in the unregulated area.
And you'll be in the regulated.
And you'll be regulated.
So, it makes no sense to run it down the middle of the street.
Right. I never thought that was the intention.
No, right, but it's way shown, so obviously.
That's just a.
But not on the side street. Is your address Hartnett or 28th or 23rd?
Do you want the big map?
No, I understand completely what's going on. I thought we had 1,000 feet that we were working with.
Which takes you to Hartnett. So, is it?
But is it 1,050 feet or 1,000 feet?
Maybe it'll have to be, yeah.
It was 1,000 feet. You're correct in that.
So, I'm looking at Douglas. Does 1,000 feet get you?
1,000, and I will say that 1,000 feet, it was not measured with any degree of accuracy. It was, 1,000 feet got, you know, somewhere in this vicinity, but it could be slightly before Hartnett, slightly after Hartnett. And the intention was just to include Hartnett, all of Hartnett. So, we didn't go down to the, we did not take measuring equipment out there and go from the beach access exactly 1,000 feet and draw the line there. We roughly scaled it and then said, "We'll put Hartnett in the regulated area."
Okay, so, I hate to refer, you know, to my situation, my neighborhood, but if everybody lives on Hartnett that crosses an avenue, okay? So, their avenue on the Hartnett side, in my neighborhood, there's no four feet of parking. It's right ways, a few inches, maybe a foot. But on the avenue side, there's plenty of parking. So, the people that live on the corner of Hartnett and an avenue all the way down to 41st, would their avenue side be included?
No. The street would be in the unregulated area. People could park in their parking lot in their lots.
Unless they petition up over 50%.
Right, so.
So, that would be a numbered street would be petitioning, okay, whatever the number is.
So, the people on the corner of Hartnett and the avenues are exempt, but their next-door neighbor is not.
Correct.
Because they're totally on Hartnett.
There's always going to be some neighbor, whether it be, I'll say, in the red zone, green zone, or yellow zone.
Councilman, that's why I really didn't like B at all, because I really think we need to talk about the impact that B is going to have on.
Well, I agree. I wonder how many other surprises we have.
Because if you really look at this whole thing, you know, A, it made a lot more sense when the whole island is treated the same, everyone is treated the same. And if we, number one, we're going to be taking parking, let me finish, please. We're going to be taking parking and taking it from where it is right now on the avenues adjacent to the Palm Boulevard, and we're going to be pushing it back past Hartnett into, and, you know, and what's going to happen is on big weekends, when you're maybe expecting company for a picnic or something, you're going to have people parking in your lot. And this, I mean, there are also a lot of negatives with this that I think the residents are really going to push back on. Because, number one, you have, we're treating, not treating all residents the same. Number two, we are going to have people literally on those peak weekends in May and June that we saw with the StanTech numbers, we're going to have people, you know, going past, and that's nothing for people to go park in, park past there, because if you look at other beaches up and down the East Coast, people, frequently will walk three, four blocks to get to the beach. Another issue with this is that, you know, once we do, and once there is additional parking where people can park in the neighborhoods, and we're just where, basically, that's where we're pushing this problem back into the neighborhoods, you're going to have people dropping people off on Palm Boulevard, dropping off their coolers, their chairs, their kids, then finding a spot back on, you know, 26 30th Avenue and then walking to the beach. And that's going to further complicate Palm Boulevard. And people on the north end of the island are really going to suffer because they're going to be stopping and starting every Saturday and Sunday trying to get to, trying to get home to their house.
That's possible, but we considered that before, so.
And I brought it up as a motion and it failed.
Right. Go ahead.
Just a counterpoint, I think if we heard anything from the residents who live on Forest Trail and whatever, they all said they don't want to be regulated where they have to have a sticker to have people park in their right-of-way. Their own family or whatever. And I think this Plan B is partly a reaction to that, that, okay, that's an unregulated area, they're not going to have to have stickers. Now, you're saying you're going back to the first thing, that no one can park in your right-of-way unless they have a residential sticker or some sort of pass.
Right, some type of a pass, similar to what we were looking at Charleston Avenue. But, yeah, the thing about it, we're taking the parking problem and we're pushing back in the neighborhoods with this plan. And that's why I'm against this plan and I really think a lot of the residents.
Okay, you made your point. You made it last month, too.
Well, I think you had a good point in that.
There's always going to be a boundary.
I found out something that's going to create problems.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I know. I mean, I mean, everybody knew there was going to be a boundary.
Right, but.
It doesn't need to be a boundary.
Well, how, why?
Please, we're on Concept B.
Well, you know, people say to me, "Why people can park in your yard and they can't park in my right-of-way, Jimmy?" Now, you're my, you're my next-door neighbor.
Well, maybe you want to make the line go straight through those lots. So, anyone who has a surface that hits Hartnett, whether it's, if it's a corner lot, they're considered in the restricted area. Then you're pushing it back one more, but at least it's, it's all, it's straight. The neighbors are, this is all up for grabs. This is all something we can do.
And there's a mechanism in the draft that would allow a group of residents to say, "Hey, I want to be in, I want to be in the restricted for resident parking." And they can, quote, "Petition" or "Draft up a note" and then we move it accordingly.
And then there's others that say they don't want to be in unregulated.
But they're in unregulated now.
Well, we just, what I learned today, we're switching some people.
But right now, we don't know what we can do, right, until DOT makes a decision.
Right.
Good point.
I think no matter what, what we decide or what's decided for us, everyone's not going to be happy. They're going to be glitches. That's why we have the ability of folks to petition and quite frankly, we're going to have to see how it works. I hate to say that because I've heard that on a federal level. We're going to have to, you know, go with it because there's, there's nothing like this anywhere in the state that I know of. So, you know, there's things that are similar, but we're forging our own, we're customizing it to the Isle Palms and are going to try and do it the best way we can.
One thing we've not discussed is how many parking permits we are going to sell for a season, a week, or a month. And I.
I think we need a, we need a census of how many parking spaces there are.
Yes.
A finite number.
Right.
The intent is, the intent is to talk to StanTech and get them to develop that because, for instance, taking the west end of the island, Carolina and Charleston in particular, taking those out of the equation, that's a couple of hundred cars that had historically parked there on a peak summer day out of roughly 1,100 or in that number, 1,180 is what StanTech originally counted. So, we're taking 200 out, so the maximum exposure, we're now down to, I'll say, 900, et cetera. But then we've got to come up with another recommendation as to how many permits are sold in there.
Since we're on this page, we all got the letter from, or there was a letter, where did I read it? There's just too much stuff going around. A fellow from Hannahhan who.
Oh, email.
He'd let, email, okay, that he's off, he doesn't mind the paid parking, that he just says that, you know, he'd like to get one, could, could season stickers not be license plate connected? Could they be in the back window of a car?
Because of the different cars that might be used.
Because that is a valid point. I mean, if I'm bringing the grandkids to the beach, I might use a Suburban, and if I'm just going on my own, I might use the Mini Cooper.
I mean, it's a matter of enforcement.
Well, true, but, you know.
How many places do we ask an officer to look for, to validate?
The license plate and the back window.
She's eyes were rolling in his head here.
Yeah, but it is a valid, it is a.
Well, we're selling a daily pass.
No, but this is, this is, this is a guy who wants to buy a season pass. I mean, he's, you know, and he's not against buying a season pass.
And he understands the merits of it, so.
Yeah.
But he'd like to have something that hangs in the car or something physical.
Well, he'd like to have something that's not connected to one car but connected to him.
I thought we discussed this whole issue and we decided that we were going to go with the technology if we were using a registered license plate.
Well, I'm just bringing it up.
Right. The question is, would the technology accommodate the holder of that permit to go in and change the license, a season permit to go in and change the license plate?
Or perhaps when they register it, it's one permit. Well, I don't know, maybe we do.
Allow people to change their cars back into, no, it's.
Well, maybe, maybe, we're just discussing, right? So, I apply for one. And I go, I need this one plate, it can only be used on one car at a time, will be for K-54 and 702. So, in the, in the computer, but then in the computer both, and those are good, we can't do that.
We'd have to release one and.
Well, that's where a hard copy in the back window.
Yeah, but once we get the hard copy, we've lost the efficiency for enforcement.
Well, maybe the hard copy is a barcode. They're scanning the license plate, right?
But then they have to get out the car to go out there and do the barcode versus.
I don't know if it's both in the back window. I mean, I'm just throwing it out, this gentleman seemed to make a valid.
It was a good, valid suggestion.
We're going to be selling X amount of daily passes, and if he wants to do that, he needs to play, just like you're buying a concert ticket. You want to go out there and you want to register and get that daily early pass as soon as possible. Or he can park in a city lot. There's a lot of options here.
Question about the city lot. Will the season passes be used in the city lot?
No.
Why not? If you can't find another place to park and you have bought a season pass and there's no parking on the island in the other places, why can't you go to the lot?
Most likely, those will be full by then, too.
You could go there and pay, or you could go there and, you could also have a, because they do sell season passes as well, the vendor there.
That's the magic to this thing, figuring out the number that you're not going to have people, more people on the island than.
Pay for more space.
If we have 1,000, we sell 2,000, they all come.
But if we're trying to get folks to utilize our parking lot, why wouldn't we have the lot included in the number for the passes? So that if there is no parking out here, then you use your pass to park in here, which means then we use that number, which is what, 150 or 200, whatever's in there, plus whatever StanTech gives us for the rest of the island, and that's the number of parking places that are on the island.
So, you're saying take away, take away the parking lot situation as.
The same works in reverse. I mean, you can buy season, season passes for the parking lot and go to utilize it and not have a space available, and then have to park somewhere else. And that's a vendor who's leased it.
So, then they have to get one, they have to get another pass and go park somewhere else.
It doesn't make sense to do, you know, that's one thing where that's, that lot is, opens up for day visitors to be able to have access to the beach, and we don't want to restrict that while having people.
It's no different than the county park also, which sells season passes for all county parks and daily passes for the passes here. You show up and you've got a pass, but it's, the lot's full, you know?
Well, let me ask this question.
It'd become a headache.
Are we going to rely on StanTech to give us, you know, we've talked about infinite number of seasonal passes and if that would work? Or are we going to rely on StanTech to give us, based on their research and other communities they've done?
I would suggest they have a more professional approach to it. Once they present it to us, it's up to us to accept it. Now, we can tweak high or lower, depending, move it from less seasonal and more daily or vice versa. But we need to, we need to have a first pass from some people who have some professional skills that understand how many spaces we've got and what sort of multiples we can deal with.
Couple of questions.
You had a question?
Yes, sir. Two parts. On our lower and side streets, we have parking on one side and not on another side. Is there any way we could rotate that like every other year so it's kind of more fair for both property owners? This year, they got it for two years. Every even year, just from side to side.
This is not every street, right? It's just a few.
Well, because on like, on some of our side streets, there's no parking on one side of the street.
I think we have it on, is it two?
Nine.
Two avenues? I'm looking at the chief here, I'm not looking at her.
Every street on the center of the island, the DOT has allowed us to rotate the side of the street that we make parking, and it's based upon whether or not the roadbed is stable enough to hold the parking. So, if one side of the street is not stable enough, we can move it to the other side of the street.
Okay.
That's on every street.
That's on every street.
But we have parking on both sides of some streets? Not, yeah, in theory.
Where you'd have parking on both sides of the street, there's no parking.
Well, but let me get back to Jimmy's point.
It's happening already.
If they're on the west side, we have the sign, parking allowed on the west side, not on the east side, I guess, does the next year, do we switch?
We don't switch it unless the roadbed becomes unstable.
It's only roadbed-based.
The side of the road becomes unstable for parking.
If the road, if both sides, if the roadbed on both sides is stable, could we move parking from one side to the, next year to the other side?
We could.
Which is.
As long as the roadbed.
That's my point.
As long as that roadbed is stable, it's a good parking.
Right, so we need to assess roadbed conditions and then determine if that's feasible.
Number two.
Well, okay, I'm just, you know, did Linda make a note of that or somebody?
Well, not yet, but I'm going to.
Okay.
And on Palm Boulevard, we have parallel parking on the ocean side and perpendicular parking on the inland side. Could we do parallel parking on both sides?
I'm sorry, on what?
On parallel parking on both sides of Palm Boulevard.
I think that that.
That was discussed.
It was discussed and decided against. And it's been discussed on a couple of occasions.
Oh, numerous times.
And decided against on a couple of occasions.
And I'm recoletting that, I believe we discussed it in public safety. And at that time, the thinking was that if we asked for a four-foot setback on the opposite side of Palm, that would be of utmost advantage to us. And then at some point later on, we could come back and pursue the parallel parking, which might be a tougher.
And that's what we requested.
We've requested the four-foot, I think we're going to get that.
Did that go through public safety, then?
Yeah.
The, okay.
I think, relative to our meeting with the DOT, not only was, did he like the idea of four feet on both sides of Palm Boulevard. He actually offered us a piece of equipment if.
Really?
Well.
To mark, to do the white line fever.
No, she's over here.
I can over Gene's mouth. We've not seen it yet.
Yeah, he said, "They actually might have a piece of equipment that would help us, they could loan it to us." I don't know for how long it may be, for a week or maybe hopefully a season, that would make it more efficient for us to run both sides of the road without causing too much difficulty. And he was talking about something other than chalk, I think.
Yes, it was a more permanent.
So, we wouldn't have to do it as frequently, hopefully. We haven't heard back from over that.
And I just brought that up because we had another email from a citizen who lives on the inland side of Palm Boulevard who had called the police department for, you know, not been able to see or.
Well, the ocean was on the ocean side.
She lives on the ocean side.
I thought it was.
4,004.
She's on the ocean. She's on the ocean.
Okay. I stand corrected.
Excuse me, Marty, is, what is the objection to parallel parking on the other side? I mean, why would they not?
It's not an objection.
Why does this?
We're afraid to, we'd rather not give SCDOT too big of a package to make a decision on it one time.
But wouldn't it be better to put all your.
I'll give you some objection. In order to parallel park, you have to completely turn around, so you'll have to go to an avenue and do some sort of U-turn in order to come back head, head the other way in order to park. And then you can't pull off but more than maybe four feet because you have our line of trees.
Focus on it.
Well, that's correct. That's why there's parallel parking virtually only on the, on the waterside, on the other side, and therefore you've got four feet in the car. Right now, most of the cars that park on the inland side are more than four feet off. And they open their doors, you can imagine the doors opening as they are now, they're further than four feet off as opposed to being parallel, they're opening the door.
Until we have the four feet off, that's where we're parallel parking right on the edge.
Right.
They'd be opening into the traffic.
But they're giving us four feet off, right?
We don't know.
Yeah, we ask, okay. In that same letter. But do we have to get, get permission to parallel once they give us the four feet?
Most likely.
Yes.
We're going to post it, parallel parking only, we wouldn't have permission.
I think, I think at the present time, if I'm not mistaken, chief, they can park, they can parallel park or they can perpendicular park. What we would be asking is for them only to be allowed to parallel park.
And I think it's safer the way it is now.
Rather than parallel.
Than parallel.
Since the majority of the traffic comes from off-island, they're going.
I know, I'm against the chief, I know that.
Can I clarify one thing for you?
Sure.
The parallel parking is limited to one spot on Palm Boulevard, that's from, on the S-curve at 21st Avenue, and the rest of it is unregulated as far as.
Oh, so it doesn't have to be parallel?
Parallel parking.
Right.
Just that the, a lot of the spots, you can't accommodate it.
Right, so you have to get it, okay.
Okay.
Just, just since the chief and the captain are here, from a safety, I mean, I found in SCDOT paperwork that they'd almost prefer parallel parking. And from y'all's point of view, is it safer to back into traffic or would y'all rather see parallel parking? Not to put you on the spot, but.
Put you on the spot.
Safety, safety wise.
To me, parallel parking is a safer method of, of parking because it eliminates people backing into the roadway. Where perpendicular parking, you're having to back into the roadway. If you angle parking, it's the same thing, you're backing into a roadway, and anytime you're backing, you increase the likelihood of accidents.
But most people who then, who want a parallel, would be required to parallel park will have to back in because they'll pull into an, beyond avenue, back out into traffic and then fall down. I doubt if they pull around a block. You know, they don't want to lose, they don't want to lose the spot that they've identified.
People will whip around and then try to back in.
Yeah, yeah. Just human nature is such, you see a parking spot, you go for it as quickly and as aggressively as you can, and that's kind of unfortunate. Michael?
How are we going to communicate to residents that they're going to have to pay to park at the beach, in the unregulated area?
We'll have to put a whole communication plan together, not only for residents, but for the entire, the entire world, frankly.
Again, I think that's going to be an issue for a lot of people with that. What about signage? We really haven't talked about, I mean, we're talking about, you know, having part of the island is regulated, some is not regulated. We were talking about people having the ability to opt out, and some people in the unregulated area could become regulated. You know, what about, what is the signage plan? Are we just going to cover the island with signs at this point, or how are we going to get to communicate this?
It will take a lot of signs, there's no question.
Every block will have to be signed. You have to tell everybody what, what this block is, whether you're allowed to park there or not, whether it's paid parking only or whatever.
Which would happen no matter plan A or plan.
Any, any plan.
Do we want to have the typical industrial strength signs or maybe something a little that's.
We will be, we will be told what our signage.
Because we talked about.
Because it'll be in the state DOT, they have to be approved.
Yeah, have to have encroachment.
We have to get a permit from the state for any sign we put in.
But we could use technology in terms of when they apply for a pass.
Sure.
That there's a map that shows exactly where this pass can be used and color coded it and all sorts of things like that, so we can do some of that for the folks that are getting the passes. But it's still going to be a massive communication program we have to put in place. Everybody received this long letter about Fifth Avenue?
Mm-hmm.
Is there any discussion on that? I mean, I drove down Fifth and they've got some real valid points, but then how do we, does they petition then to be in the unrestricted?
Well, they can, but.
Or are the ones that we've identified as parking, they have no choice?
Well, and I will say that one of their, when they go to the end there and summarize what their, you know, their desires, one of those things is an issue that they would have to take up with DOT now. It's not something that the city would regulate, they would need to approach SCDOT about that now, and then we would respond to however SCDOT, you know, makes a determination on it. And then, I have my copy here somewhere.
Because that's a unique.
Unique area.
It's a very unique area.
And I think that that was the area that, having to do with the measurements.
Correct.
Right. How much? Right away.
They're not sure.
Thank you.
They had it surveyed apparently.
The, the no parking related to their survey and measurements is, is an argument that they need to direct to SCDOT at this time. And then the balance of that would be, would be dealt with as part of what, what we are doing. I think that we've already made a decision about ocean, though, so that takes that off the, off the table for now.
Okay. We're out, we're out of energy until we hear from the DOT. At this point, I want to ask Linda's staff to work with StanTech in the meantime, so we can get that moving forward, because even if it takes a while to hear from DOT, we're going to need that information before long. Jimmy? When are we ever going to start talking about the money?
Well, let me.
Your staff is compiling.
Let me comment about that. I have tried to be very careful, from a staff perspective, we are thinking about all of these things. The money, the, how we would implement vendors for the implementation, all of those things we have been talking about at our department manager level meetings. However, we've tried not to go too far because until we get, you know, an affirmative reaction out of DOT, there are other city projects that we have out there that need to get accomplished before the balance of the fiscal year ends, that, you know, we don't want to get, we don't want to get out there too far and then find out that that, that effort is, is, you know, for nothing. So I've been trying to strike a balance, not to, you know, have StanTech use up the remaining balance of their money too quickly or devote too much time and attention, but, but do know that we're working on it and ready to move into action once we get an affirmative nod. And, and you know, we've been working on a preliminary budget and trying to separate out what would be initial implementation cost from what would be ongoing cost, so we're beginning to think those things through. We still have the big question of what the vendor piece, and when I say the vendor piece, the software and the technology piece of this would be, and until we begin to have more specific conversations with specific vendors, other than just, you know, what are some of the kinds of things that you can do, which is really all we've had so far, you know, we, we don't know that piece of the expense yet. But I've, I've tried to not get, to, you know, put the cart before the horse and get too far out there before we're sure that we're going to be able to move forward with this.
Well, the only, I know staff is consumed with this and other things. I mean, for instance, we have our meeting next week with the county council on the public restrooms, and so we'd have to put all of those ducks in a row to, to try and sell that.
Just refresh my memory, didn't we have a certain amount of money in the parking and we took a bunch of it out and put it somewhere else?
We had originally budgeted, I believe, and I'm going on memory, and I always bring my budget document, but today I didn't, and today I get the question, but I think we had originally estimated $150,000 for potential implementation cost. And then I think that that number was reduced down, I think to 100. And so the FY15 budget has $100,000 in there for implementation cost.
And that other 50 went into some.
We didn't budget it.
No, I, I think it just got cut.
It was cut, period.
I don't think it went, you know, to another initiative.
So that's what, and, you know, I have to believe it's going to cost us more than $100,000 in the first year to implement, if nothing else, just signage is going to chew up a good piece of that, let alone any, any vendor or anything else.
And, and we can't get to the expense of the pass until we can get to the expense of the program. So, you know, we're a little bit on a catch-22 there. We've got to determine, if the goal is to offset the expense of operating the program by the number of passes that are sold, then we've got to get to what our expense is, to get to what the number is for what they will cost people to purchase them.
I have no idea of how to predict when we're going to hear back from DOT. That's, that's like a black hole.
And that's what I'm saying, we can sit here, I love the discussion, I love the ideas that everybody's throwing out here, but we can sit here and talk to her blue in the face. And I mean, nothing's, it's all really moot until the DOT comes out and authorizes us to move forward on something, they have to give us direction.
Right.
And one of the things that I'd like, that we talked about, and it was kind of glazed over a little bit, and, you know, the administrator made a point about it, are the upper numbered streets, where there's a lot of parking on the, on the higher, on the north end of the island, in those side streets. And, I mean, in a, in a perfect world, I still think, and like it had been brought before, I mean, people are going to walk to the beach, and Michael brought it up, you know, everybody else brought it up. I don't understand why we can't have parking on Palm Boulevard and then, you know, or up 703, then it turns into Palm Boulevard, make that the public parking area, and they can walk up those beach access streets in order to get to them.
We can't get credit because it's a, it's not.
It's a distance from the beach access.
But we're showing it from 53rd to 57th on our diagrams.
Well, that's because there's independent beach accesses.
Right.
Because those accesses come all the way to Palm.
Correct. But still, I mean, I mean, there's only.
Yeah, right in here, see, the beach access actually goes all the way to Palm.
Correct.
Whereas down here, the beach accesses are here and they're measured from where the access meets the street. So we can get credit for all of this parking along Palm Boulevard because the access point, if you ride down Palm in this section, you'll actually see marked beach accesses at Palm.
What constitutes a beach access path?
A street doesn't.
A street or a certain sized dirt pathway?
It's a marked path with.
Well, we can do, put another sign up, it says beach access path.
Which means you walk on the street to get to the, on pavement before you get to the.
That would be an OCRM determinant.
Right, and as I'm saying, I'm losing my two cents, but like I said, we can sit here and talk to her blue in the face until, you know, DOT gets off.
Yeah, Michael?
Back to signage a little bit. Because of the massive amount of signs we're going to need for this project and the lead time that we've traditionally have had, I think we really need to have that plan in place now, knowing exactly how many signs, what type of signage, example, the arrows pointing in different directions and everything. I think we'd have that laid out now because it's not going to, it's not, this is not a typical, and we've waited for signs for DOT in the past, and this is not a typical order. This is, you know, a huge, huge undertaking, so I think we really need to have that detailed out and understand where we're going to put every sign.
We've done that.
I think that staff has been.
Do we have the number, do we have, do we know how many signs we need and how much it's going to cost?
We have gone, taken the maps, I don't know how much it's going to cost yet. We have taken the maps and actually gone through and said, we'll need to sign here, a sign here and a sign here. What do these need to say? How many of these will we need? So we, we've tried to, we've tried to get started with that much of it.
All right, okay, that's important.
But you're, but you're correct in that just the availability of signs may, it may scuttle us for the upcoming early season.
What, what's our line in the sand as far as time?
Well.
When is it going to be impossible for us to?
We keep, I've started saying, as soon as, as soon as we are authorized and have all of the ducks in a row, we will implement it. And whether that's in May, June, or as late as July, you know, we may do it in mid-season, I don't, I don't know, which is kind of.
It all depends on SCDOT.
Yeah, yeah, we may have to decide that.
Are we currently prodding them every other day?
Well, we just sent it to them.
Yeah, the 24th is when we, when we send it, so.
I mean, we met with them and sent it out about two days later and we've gone from there, so they had a holiday also. Michael?
Any more updates on the software package, the vendors preparing on this?
We have not selected a vendor, first of all. We couldn't, you know, make a commitment to a vendor unless SCDOT tells us that we can do this, so.
Do we have formal bids from the vendors?
No. We don't know what to bid at this point.
So, there's a lot to be done. I mean, that's the bottom line of all this.
I have a question about signage. When did StanTech first start installing their signs under the current contracts that were, you know, the wayfinding signs? We have wayfinding signs?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
When did they do that?
When did they start doing that?
It's about a year and a half.
About a year and a half.
Well, there's one of them, at least one of them is, is already in disrepair, it's fallen off the pole. Or they, right down here, are they responsible for, for repairing it, fixing it?
It depends on whether there's a warranty. They, we didn't buy it from StanTech, we bought it from a vendor.
Yeah, turnkey.
And the question is, the vendor, you know, whether it's that or whether it's somebody maliciously damaging the signs or, tell Douglas to go down there and check it out, tell him which sign it is.
That's right, down here, J.C. Long.
Just passed.
The sign is on the ground, laying next to the pole.
Looks like the glue failed.
Is there a mark of a baseball bat or anything on it?
I didn't examine it, but it looks like it just.
Just fell off.
J.C. Long, Paul? Right before Pavilion.
Right.
On the right.
Okay. I have nothing else on beach access management, I'd like to move on to new business. We have our annual transportation sales tax project requests. This is an annual request that seems to be getting, giving us shorter notice time every year. Last year, we made a request, we gave them two projects, one being the drainage work from 54th, no, 50.
46 to 52nd.
46 to 52nd. Second project being a bike path engineering.
Survey.
Yeah, engineering survey, bike path along Palm Boulevard, coupled with, I guess the, I'll call it an exit ramp, a bike ramp coming off of the connector, turning right onto Palm Boulevard. We got no monies allocated to us last year on either project. I would recommend and make a motion that we just submit the same ones again.
Second.
Any discussion on this?
Do we have any, I mean, are we just doing the same thing over and over again, expecting a different result type thing, or is there a reason?
They only have so much money and there's, you know, 10, 20 times the amount of funds requested and what they have unavailable, and it's not a beauty contest, best I can tell. We've gotten some significant money in the first phase of our drainage project.
Well, and we got one CTC allocation towards the second.
And we got a CTC, yes, true.
Second phase, and transportation sales tax and county sales tax, they're, they all involve some of the same staff level people, so the fact that they've, you know, endorsed Phase Two by funding it on the county sale, on the county committee suggests that, you know, there would be some.
And the fact, I mean, I'm hopeful, I, we don't know, I'm hopeful, we've done the engineering on the drainage, we're maybe even able to start the first phase.
We're trying to get easements.
On the monies that we already have set up, so, you know, it's a real project in in their eyes, and so putting some money towards it would be, and they're not going to put enough towards it in one year to have it all complete, but just allow us to start accumulating some.
So when we submit these, do we submit pictures of our generators and pumps down there?
We got a whole...
This is last application. And there's always pictures, and there's letters of support, too, from, so if any of the residents are out there and they want to submit letters of support about how badly this is needed, that's always included as well.
Yeah, we try and sell it as, as much as we can, and then...
And also said beach access. You got to put on a life jacket to get to the beach through this pond down there.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. That'll be submitted in the next week or two, I guess.
Should be fairly easy to submit.
Yeah, just change the date. We're processing, it's good. Other item on business is you have in your possession, first reading by title only, ordinance 2014 to 12, an ordinance authorizing the issuance, sale of a general obligation refunding bond, series 2015. This is, will be in the principal amount, not to exceed $1.5 million, fixing the form. Detail of the bond authorizing the city administrator or lawfully authorized, designate to determine certain matters relating to the bond, providing for the payment of the bond and disposition of the proceeds thereof, and other matters relating thereto. I'll make the motion for first reading, and spend the full reading of the ordinance. This, of course, is refinancing the remaining debt on the rec center, and we're hopeful of receiving some significant savings in our interest payments by doing that. And that's what's expected. The bond attorneys have given us good hope to that matter, and to do it now would be useful. Okay?
Second.
Motion seconded. Jimmy?
Isn't this the one that we had to spend additional funds that were not budgeted? To put this in a motion?
Correct.
To get it below the $1,005,000.
Right, it wasn't in the budget.
Correct.
Okay. About a 10, you know, how much? Forty-some thousand?
Thirty.
I don't remember the exact...
I remember thirty and both saving.
I do remember that you all authorized this to go forward with...
They got my file, but we're going to say...
It was not unanimous.
Saving it.
But saving 18,000 a year.
Yeah, how much, a question, what's the savings being on the total cost of the bond?
I think it's estimated $80,000.
Yeah, net savings, I think we...
So we spend 40 to get 80?
No, we're spending the 40 no matter what.
Yeah.
Because that's principal. That has to be paid off.
Right.
We're paying down, we have to...
If we don't spend the 40, we're paying $80,000 more.
And then, then we save, and we actually have some interest savings in this fiscal year, but it's like $14,000 out of 70.
But again, it was not in the budget.
No, no.
It's not budgeted.
We're estimating a savings of about $72,000, 71, 38.
Which is another six years or something, right?
I don't remember.
Yes, six years.
I don't remember. Why was it not brought up during the budget?
We didn't, we didn't know if we'd have sufficient funds. We had, we had some, some fund, you know, carryforward funds that we'd, at the year end, because we were favorable on revenue and under on expenses. So giving us the opportunity to then allocate forty-some thousand dollars to pay down this debt, to make it $1,000,000. Yeah, that's what we did.
We didn't put it in the general fund.
No, it was not budgeted. That's the whole point.
Right. Because we didn't know we were going to have it, right. But the reason was because we...
This doesn't come out of the general fund, it comes out of capital. So, and it comes out of, and it comes out of accommodations, too. So, between the two.
It was not budgeted.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. No need for executive session. I'm going to adjourn this meeting. And unfortunately, we can't reconvene till 6 o'clock, so please take a, please take a walkabout, or whatever, and hopefully, we have a quorum at 6 o'clock to move forward.
Is that a blue tick? Is that a little blue tick down?
This parking plan implemented?
I don't know what you mean about double parking.
Well, you know, people, one car will park four feet off, and then another one will park...
Behind it.
Behind it, or toward the ocean. So will it be any of that? Will that be eliminated? Double parking, two cars?
I would say this, that if it's legal for them to park there, then it will not be eliminated. If it is, if they're parking in a manner that's not legal, then the police department will enforce on that.
So that's, that map doesn't designate then what is legal about it?
Do you have a flash on your camera?
I'm talking about, you know, there, the parallel space to park. Can you?
If we move four feet off the road on Palm, if we're able...
Ocean side now, people double park. Parallel double park.
The only place I have seen them do that has been in the vicinity of 21st Avenue. And that has already been signed, this no parking.
Okay, so it won't happen further down, yeah?
I don't think there's room.
DOT has no prohibition against that, as long as it's safe.
Yeah. If it's legal to do it, we won't be, we would not be stopping it.
Okay, and the other point then, Tom, I want to have to clarify, on the inland side, there will be perpendicular parking. So basically, everything will remain the same as it is now. There will be no change on either side. There will be parallel parking on ocean side, and there will be perpendicular parking on...
That's not fair.
Yeah. Correct, except we're hoping that they give us four feet off Palm, on the opposite side of Palm. Correct.
Did I show the pictures that were taken to the county?
Oh, no.
I think it would probably be unlikely in that area that you're talking about, that it would accommodate, you know, one car parks in front of the other, they'd be on the sidewalk.
This is our restroom.
Oh, that's rules.
I want to show them.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's great pictures. Stanley Ramoni.
Oh, Stanley Ramoni, shows the full ethnic contribution.
Looks like an airline, line, you know? A mile long.
You know, I want to say 10, 30, I mean, you can get 20 cars that are not being violated.
We're meeting, we're meeting with, eventually, we're meeting with Dicky and...
The secretary, who is the secretary? Y'all mentioned the secretary, is there a name?
Yes, yes.
Can we put on the webpage?
It's on the, it's on SCDOT's webpage.
When are you meeting with them?
Transportation.
Next week.